Go ahead and call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for May 9, 2017 to order. Would you please bow your head in a moment in silent prayer? Your stand will have Pledge of Allegiance?
I plead allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number A, Mayor's Minute and Council Comments. First off, I would like to note that May 7 through the 13th is Municipal Clerks Week, and I do have a proclamation, although I won't read it, but we appreciate our clerk, Ms. Spinnable, and thank her, and as I think I mentioned last time that she had received the certification there. So, congratulations. Also remind people that on next Tuesday, the 16th of May, they'll have the Historic Preservation Awards at the Bristol Public Library. That will start at 6:30. So those were the two items I had. Anybody else?
I just, Mr. Mayor, if I may, please, just, we, I probably should have said this before the moment of silence. I hope everyone here, if you don't know him, Scott Jones lost his mother. Scott Jones has been an athlete in this city, a good student, a productive citizen for a number of years, and I just hope that everybody will remember Scott in this time of need and loss, and know, Scott, that you're in our prayers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And one other thing, one other announcement. Saturday, I think 10 o'clock, is it? Tommy Hilton's having a dedication ceremony down at Eastern Little League. If you know Tommy, he's coached Little League down there more than the years I can count, probably 39-plus years. Lance is in the uniform back there in the back. I think Tommy was part of the fire department for several decades, so if you got a story or two to tell, I'm sure Tommy would appreciate if you come down there and tell it.
All right. Item number B, proclamation recognizing May 13, 2017 as Ron Nishyay Day.
Neck eye.
Did I get that right, Malin?
That's pretty close.
Neck eye, isn't it?
No hitter or perfect.
When I was eight years old, I called him Ron Neck Eye.
Is it neck eye or Nishyay?
Yeah. The correct pronunciation is Nishyay, N-E-T-S-H-Y.
Nishyay.
Nishyay.
Okay. I apologize for butchered it if I did. A proclamation recognizing Ron Nishyay Day. Whereas 65 years ago, Ron Nishyay made baseball history in Bristol at Shaw Stadium, Bristol, Virginia, and whereas as a pitcher for the Bristol Twins, many came to watch, the hard throwing right-hander from Monaghahela, Pennsylvania, and whereas Ron Nishyay had a fast, had a moving fastball and a sharp breaking curve ball that overmatched many, and whereas on May 13, 1952, Ron Nishyay set a record in professional baseball for pitching 27 strikeouts in one nine-inning game, and whereas 65 years later, still he stands alone with one of the most amazing records in the annals of baseball history. And now therefore, we, the mayors of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May 13, 2017 as Ron Nishyay Day in the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ms. Crowder, and Staff. On behalf of Ron and his family, I am much honored to accept this proclamation from the cities of Bristol. If I may, I would like to read a message from Ron. He says, "I can't believe that after 65 years, someone could still remember this day. How very thoughtful. I do appreciate the thoughts and am honored to be remembered. As I've said many, many times, my life is tied to Bristol. Thanks, Ron."
Where's he living now? Is he, is he, is his health fairly well, fairly good?
We tried to get him up here, but his health is declining. Ron's about 90 years old. He lives in Bradenton, Florida now. He moved from Pennsylvania, got out of the cold after the sunny Florida.
I don't blame him.
Great guy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luttrell, and again, that's a pretty staggering feat. Okay, item number B, a proclamation, or excuse me, C, a proclamation recognizing May 20, 2017 as Kids to Park Day. I'll read this. Proclamation to recognize May 20, 2017 as Kids to Park Day. Whereas May 20, 2017 is the seventh Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, and whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our nation's parks, and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes mellitus, hypertension, and hypercholesterema, and whereas Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants, and whereas Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, does hereby proclaim May 20, 2017 as Kids to Park Day in the city of Bristol, and encourages all residents to make time, May 20, 2017, to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park. And I believe that there's some events planned that day. Ron? Excuse me, Dan.
Mayor and councilman, we will be having Kids to Park Day at Sugar Hall Park, as you mentioned, May the 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And some of the events for that day, we'll be having some hikes. One of them would be recycling, finding trash and bringing it to treasure. This will be for ages pre-K through 15 years old. We'll also have a geocaching event, a treasure hunt. You pick up trash, gather up stuff, clean up, and find other things there. That's a guided hike, that'll be at 11:00 a.m. We also will have a water hike, and this will be through the Wetlands Safari, and it's at 10:30 a.m. Also, a tree hike at 1:00, 11:00 a.m. Also, we'll have Flying Finch Disc Golf there. The Dr. Finch, who's also an avid disc golfer and a pro at it, will be there to introduce the children to disc golf, and all of this is sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Department, Flying Finch Disc Golf, and Southwest Houston River Conservation District area.
Thank you. I hope people come out and enjoy that. I hope it's a beautiful day. All right, move to the regular agenda. Item number one, Executive Session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711.8.1 Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body personnel. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, call it a roll.
Yes.
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 Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. By roll call vote, council members will certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call it a roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Item number three, consider granting consent to City Managers' request to employ a Community and Economic Development Director.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we table this, given the fact that we're right in the middle of budget cycle. We're not in a position to make hiring decisions at this point, so I recommend that we table this in my motions, we table this until after the budget is secured and approved.
Now, second to that.
All right. Have a motion and a second.
We can specify, though, can we, I mean, your motion is to table it after budget, or we, can we, can we make a specific period, at least 60 days out? Can you amend that to that, to reflect that?
Yeah, I can. I'm in the motion to 60 days from this date that we reconvene and readdress this opening, which is 60 days from today's date.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Clerk, call it a roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
No.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
No. All right. Consent agenda. Items 4.1, consider street closure requests for Bill Gatten Fun Run for a field 5K. Item 4.2, consider a street closure request for Bristol Summer Kickoff Lock Party. Item 4.3, consider a street closure request for One Border Bash Event. Item 4.4, consider approval of minutes. Item 4.5, consider Appointment Transportation Safety Commission Ken Moynihan. Have a motion to approve the consent agendas?
I approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Sirica.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk, call it a roll.
Flainer.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Council discussion. Item number D, GIS update and GIS online. Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and council members. We're here not basically to bring to you the current status of the city's GIS system. This has been an ongoing project since, originally in 2001, GIS was brought to the city as a platform for potential development. We are at the status now to where we have just recently gone live with this particular product to, for the accessibility of everyone in the public. Just to give you a brief history of where this has been, as I stated, in 2001, there was, there was original start to the GIS. In 2011, the city acquired the services of Interactive GIS in a bid process to use this company as the hosting service. We are currently still with them to date. In 2015, I began solely working on updating the accuracy and the validity of all the parcels, address mapping, and essentially everything to do with land, structures, housing, every entity that this city has that we call the City of Bristol, Virginia, is now mapped in this system. To give you a brief scenario of what I'm discussing here, if you think of GIS, a lot of people do not really understand what GIS entails. It's geographic information systems. Every single community that surrounds us, as far as I have actually searched, has had GIS in some format for a minimum of the last 15 years. The City of Bristol, Virginia has been the doughnut hole that has never provided this as a public, barely even as a professional service, just for our in-staff people. To summarize what goes on here, the top five layers of data that take place in GIS parcels, every single parcel in this city, we have 13,704 of those. We have road segments that are basically the baseline for everything to do mapping, because you can't have parcels without a road, roughly 2,060 road segments. We have roughly 11,500 building structures in this city, and we have 8,200-plus address points that control dispatch and 911 services for this city. That sounds like a lot, but that's just five layers of data in a multitude of layers that have been generated just in the last two years. And just those five layers constitute 1.1 million attribute datas for these, just those five records. So the data set that is used to control this system in some way affects every single department and every single resident of this city, some in a very small manner and some in a very large manner. The rationale behind why we've decided to put such an effort towards 911 is very simple. We have what's called Next Gen 911, which some people have heard of it, some people haven't, but 911 as we know it today will formally be turned off in the year 2020. Every single piece of equipment federally, nationwide, that controls 911 in this country literally stops to exist in the year 2020. The state of Virginia is one of the leading states in the entire country that has been pushing for the advancement of Next Gen, and the state has vowed that we will be compliant with Next Gen 911 by 2021. So that sounds like a ways down the road, but there are going to be, every single address, every single structure in this city will have to be evaluated to make sure that it meets this next generation of 911. Landlines, as we all know, are becoming a dinosaur. Next Gen 911 addresses everything from text to 911, to being able to locate any cell phone that drives within the cell tower range of this city. The purpose and the intent of this is to improve 911 and dispatch to the point that anybody can be found as quickly and as easily among all emergency services as we could possibly expect to achieve. So that is the driving force behind what's got the GIS system as such an important asset that we really have to focus on. The good to this as it, as it stands is the fact that the vast majority of equipment and so forth used to generate this data is supplied to us strictly through grant money. So this is really a no-expense upgrade for the city to get us compliant with not only the state, but the federal standard for 911 implementation. As we currently stand, one of the other primary uses for this, and I know this has been a little bit of a, of a sensitive subject, the great thing about just dealing with the 911 addresses brings parcels to question. And as I say, when we're dealing with almost 14,000 parcels of land and approximately 50-some-odd attributes with every single one of these parcels, and I will gladly show you a demonstration of this as soon as I give you this summarization, but at the current time, with the help of Commissioner Revenue's Office, there's been specifically a lady that I would like to mention, Ms. Lisa Kincaid, who has been strict, very strict in helping me to link every single parcel of land in this city to a real-world map that is understandable for anyone the moment you see this product. As anything from attorneys to just the average resident who wants to know, hey, what does my land look like? This is by no means to be interpreted as a survey-grade lot line, but it is a mile further than anything we've ever had to date. The great thing about this, GIS Now is actually live. We have a website through this interactive hosting service. The general public can log on, you can see, see all of the data. We have also done some verification through our IT people. The number one search through our own city website in our search engine has been the word GIS. This has been asked for for the last seven to eight years specifically of our council and of our city leaders as to why this does not exist. Well, today you can say it does. So now we have the ability, not only just through this website, to view land data, there's also other attributes to this that, as I say, are going to stretch citywide. This, the website that we are, that we are under contract with is the same website that Washington County uses. They recently went out and stopped doing in-house GIS to go with this server because of the cost-effectiveness of it in comparison to try to provide this information citywide to the residents as well as to the staff. It is just so much cheaper to do this hosted service than it is any other means for giving this data out. To give you an idea of where this stands so far, two weeks ago, we did a soft opening on the website. In two weeks, with absolutely no public announcement of it being active, the site has already received 144 visitors. 79 of them are unique visitors that only went one time on average. These 79 users were there for less than four minutes. Now, what that tells you is to express how deep-felt and heart intent, or heart intent I've been in this process. I've gone out, I have asked private developers, I have asked real estate agents, I have communicated with everybody who could possibly use this software that I can think of to ask them, what do you want to see? And every person that has seen this, I've said, you're not going to hurt my feelings, you know, nothing on the table. Tell me what you want. Every single one of them, the only words I've heard have been, wow, this is great. So I'm, I'm quite proud of this project, but it still has a long way to go. The end project is always a moving target, because as land records change, as properties change ownership, the data that goes with that is very clear and it's very concise, and at the end of the day, this is a tool that you can use as the city's council to look, where are my tax revenues coming from? How, how much acreage does this guy own versus what the other guy owns? How much land does he have? What is this land inundated with? We have floodplain information, we have zoning information, we have historical data information, we have every single street in this city with a road center line, range, and name. We are trying to provide consistency across the board to where my kind of epitome of what's, of how the general public perceives things, if you ask 10 people, is it King's Mill Pike? Is it King Mill Pike? Is it one word? Is it two words? Every single, I have found multiple dockets, even where the own city has referred to that one street in four different connotations. So this brings a level of standard. Every single thing that we do, we have done historical tracking on to make sure that we are as accurate as we can be, and at this point, the site and the data should eventually become the standard for everything to do with mapping citywide that we have. The site is currently being used in-house by the planning, the planning and zoning department. It's currently being used by Economic Development. It is currently being used by the CDBG Coordinator. It is also, every building permit touches this site, every engineering permit that is issued touches this site. Everything to do with code enforcement, everything to do with solid waste as far as land ownership touches this site. Now, secondary to all of that is the fact that we have also put in the forefront the fact that we're going and we're trying to unify all three emergency services to have one singular dispatch to where everyone has access to an accurate address with the least amount of time necessary to get any emergency services to any resident or business that's required. So if you, if you'd like, I would be glad to give you a very brief demonstration. I know we've got a lot on the agenda tonight. Any questions before we go to the demo?
I can see where people out of town looking to maybe come to Bristol can pull this up and look for empty lands or look for certain buildings and get a lot of detail before they even contact us. So I mean, that's fantastic. What, how specifically do you think this can help the Commissioner Revenue's Office?
It would make it a very simple tool for generating data in relation to what the Commissioner Revenue does. The simplest way to explain that is it takes a matter of seconds now for me to generate a report to show every piece of land the city owns. I've been asked to do that. It's a matter of every piece of data on this land. It's easily viewable. The website will allow you to look at the aerial of the, of the land, to see where it's situated. It will allow you to go to a street view if there's a piece of property in question. If someone is, let's say, for example, referencing a dilapidated home that's been empty and needs to come down, you as council members, if you're sitting at home, you can say, well, where, where am I receiving this phone call from? You know, what, what's the property in question? You have direct access to be able to see Google View on any piece of property in this city. You have direct access to see if the taxes have been paid on that property. You have direct access to see who owns that property and what their mailing address, including the property address, is, and this is all standard information that every GIS department nationwide offers as a minimum set of criteria that's available.
I've played around with it. I'm very impressed. I was amazed at how much information is available, or how little, depending on what your interest is. So I mean, it's, it looks like a good deal, depending on what your business is, as to which levels you're interested in looking at. So, good job.
Do you want the demo?
I've been on there before.
Okay. We'll just skip the demo since we've got a long agenda.
Okay.
If you, but I do want to thank Mr. Miller for all the work he put in. I know this has been a lot of work and I think this will be a good asset for the city, both externally with people, the vice mayor mentioned, looking before they come, they can find out a lot about particular pieces of property, and also within the departments of the city. To have all this information in one place, I think, is, is very valuable. So thank you for all your work. All right, we will move now to item number E, Budget for Fiscal Year 18. I guess, you know, you know, last night, we went through some of that. I think we stopped, and there were still two items on the agenda that we didn't get to last night, which was the landfill and other sources of revenue. We can pick up there, although one thing I think before we get started, we probably ought to look at is we've got a meeting scheduled for Saturday at 9 o'clock. You know, I think the city manager, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, my mate, we had thought if it's okay with you all tonight, we'd talk a little bit about the property tax, give you an update on that, as well as other sources of revenue, and talk about the schedule for the public hearing. And then on Saturday, I have asked all the department managers to be in attendance, if possible, so we could do something similar to what we did last night with those few departments, and so if you all have questions, you can ask directly. That may take longer than nine to one, depending on the amount of questions that you have. I know there were some questions last night about communication, and we have pulled some initial numbers. I'd ask you to bear with us. We definitely have those totals. We just want to put them in a format and context that we could easily hand to you, so we'll get that to you before Saturday. In regards to the certification, if you don't, is that okay if I go ahead and start and do those items?
Yes.
And we can do the landfill tonight, having said that, but my preference would be to wait till Saturday, but if you all want to do it tonight, we can. As far as the certification goes, I know the commissioner's here somewhere. There he is. He has provided me certified numbers. They are very similar to what he presented last Thursday. Uh, they are very similar to what he presented last, uh, Thursday. Um, the, uh, the new certified levy would be, uh, taxable value, I'm sorry, for the city would be. And I'm going to make sure I give you the right number. The new, um, tax, property tax for the city would be thirteen million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and six cents. And that would be an increase of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents over, uh, the two thousand sixteen seventeen levy. As we mentioned to you all, that, uh, state statute allows it's only to go up by one percent, and this is above that amount. And so, we are working to bring you a recommendation on Saturday, uh, concerning the real estate property tax. But it appears that we may have a reduction up to three cents based on that, uh, information the commissioner's provided. But again, we'll have that definitively for you and how that compares with what we've built in the budget and can talk more about that at that, that point. I don't, Terry, uh, would, Mr. Fry, do you concur with one of them? Okay. Um, and then I have a PowerPoint. That, uh, and I don't have the clicker, so I'm going to let you do it for me, Jane, how's that? Um, so, we had, this, we actually had this, the, uh, first night Commissioner Fry presented, and so, we've updated it a little bit based on discussions. So, revenue items for discussion, um, personal property taxes, um, the, the current personal property taxes. We had, we're showing a projected decrease of four hundred and eighty-two thousand. We have done that based on the trend as well as historical data. We have went in and taken out ball, uh, I think ball was around three hundred thousand of that decrease. DRI has a decrease of eighty thousand, but I will remind you that that's a flow-through number that goes directly to the revenue bonds. So, there was an offsetting revenue that was equal to that, and we've decreased, I mean, an offsetting expense, excuse me. And we have, um, decreased that as well. So, total decrease, personal property taxes that were shown in the, uh, draft budget's five hundred and sixty-two thousand. Local sales and use tax, decrease of four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Uh, again, that's, um, again, that's, uh, with the basic closure of Sears, as well as, uh, some of the other stores in the mall, that's what we attribute that to. Restaurant meals tax, I think was the next slide, decrease of five hundred and forty-five thousand. Um, with the increased competition in the area, primarily from the pinnacle, uh, we're attributing that to, um, that decrease. Again, both of those taxes are based on removing what we know, for example, in this one, Ruby Tuesday's closed, we know Outback's closing. We've taken those out and then looking at historical data and, and the trend. Other revenue items, sale of land and building, we had an unusual year last year in that the city has, uh, had an offer on the Pepsi property, and we had built that into the budget. And so, that is scheduled to close prior to June thirtieth. We had, I'll remind you, bought that as part of, um, the widening of Lee Highway there. And so, because we spent roadway funds for that, this money had to be directed toward, uh, our Lee Highway bond, uh, expenses. Um, in other words, had to go back toward a roadway project is what I'm saying. However, with this budget, we're decreasing that line on five hundred and forty thousand. And we are leaving it at three hundred thousand, because as we've looked at, you know, you all have seen the number of lots that we have at Clear Creek. There's been discussion about doing something with those. In addition, Councilman Wingard had had us look at all city property. And so, there's some other pieces of property that we will be doing some, uh, BIDs or RFPs on to see, uh, what kind of interest. So, we have left three hundred thousand in that line item. Restaurant meals tax, DRI, again, that's a pass-through because that goes to pay the bonds. And so, we're just trying to adjust that to what we anticipate it to be, but there's an offsetting expense because it's a flow-through. And then, local bond issues, that's part of our debt, uh, fees associated with the debt, and so, we have decreased that since this budget didn't include any, uh, new additional debt. And so, then we wanted to give you a budget update, which we talked about last night, a running total per se. And so, with the, uh, removal of the EMS, uh, revenue and adjusting the Sugar Halla fees for a partial year, uh, right now, we're at a shortfall of five hundred and eighty-four thousand. So, our thought is to get through, uh, to have the workshop Saturday and go through all the expenses. Um, set some meetings, um, for next week, if possible, to talk about the budget in general. And we'd be happy to bring you some ideas on how you may feel this shortfall, as well as listen to your ideas, certainly. Um, but having said that, going on to the schedule then, um, the issue with the public hearing is that we have to advertise the budget ordinance for the public hearing, and it has to be published, a minimum of seven days prior. And so, to have the hearing on the twenty-third, it would have to be published the seventeenth, which means at the latest, you know, the morning of the fifteenth, we'd have to have the ad to the paper. And so, at this point, you know, I don't think realistically, at the end of the day, Saturday, we would have a budget ordinance ready to go to the paper. So, um, I would suggest you all talk about dates. I would throw out, in terms of moving the public hearing, you know, I would throw out maybe Thursday, May twenty-fifth, or even Tuesday, May thirtieth. Um, you know, again, Tuesday, May thirtieth gives us more time, it gives us next week, most of next week, to, uh, develop the rest of the, the budget ordinance. Because again, you have to really look at nine days prior, uh, nine to ten days prior to do that ad. So, with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for your thoughts, and certainly any questions you have on moving.
Any questions?
I'm just looking at the calendar.
What's the deadline on our budget that has to be passed by?
Into June.
In?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth.
If we have the, uh, public hearing on the thirtieth, when would we have the first and second reading?
You would, realistically, you would need to have two weeks between the public hearing and the first reading if you, because you'd need to allow yourself some time to change the budget ordinance if you so desire. So, I would say, if you had it the thirtieth, you could do the first reading the thirteenth. Then you could do the second reading and adoption the twenty-seventh. So, it puts you back on the regular meetings, but you'd have a called meeting for the public hearing.
All right. So. Or? Okay. So, if we do that, then we meet the thirteenth, what about meeting next week?
I'm good the fifteenth. I'm, I'm good the night of the fifteenth, I'm good the night of the sixteenth.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Eighteenth is fine.
I, I would ask if possible, and only if possible, that we not meet two nights in a row. That if we could meet, have a night in between, that would help us, because we've had time, we've had some issues getting stuff ready.
How about then, um, sixteenth and the eighteenth? Since we're meeting on the thirteenth, that would give them Monday to address anything that comes out of that, Monday and Tuesday.
Sixteenth is a Tuesday, eighteenth is a Thursday.
And then, um, is that?
You're saying June the thirteenth?
No, 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 May, May, we're going to meet this Saturday.
May sixteen and eighteen.
And then that would, then next Tuesday.
Okay.
Uh, as well as next Thursday. So, that would give then Monday and Tuesday to address anything that comes out of Saturday's meeting. And Wednesday and, and Thursday during the day to address anything that come out of Tuesday's meeting, so. Hopefully.
They're saying.
Hopefully, we can wrap things up then. We may have to go a little more than a couple hours each night. Well, yeah, I mean, uh.
We would, we would really need to have the ad, the budget ordinance to be preparing that on the nineteenth.
Yeah, so. So, we'd have those two nights to, but I think Sat- after Saturday, we can ask all the questions like we did last night, so. Then it's for us to sit down and try to figure out how we reckon, once we get the information, how to reconcile that.
I assume the meetings would start at six, is that your all's thought?
Yes. Six.
It can be a little earlier if you want.
I mean, it's up to you all, we're here, we're here, so.
I'm free, I'm free, so I can be here earlier if you need. So, it's really up to you.
I mean, if you want to, we could probably start a little earlier. Yeah, we can do five-thirty. Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty work for you.
Aren't you retiring at another time?
I'm already thinking all the naps I'm going to miss.
I know. We could probably start at five, if you really want.
Five at half, that's good.
Both days.
On sixteenth and eighteenth, five o'clock. Yes?
Can you make that? I think I can, yeah, I should be able to.
Then May thirtieth would be a public hearing, so we'll hold it called meeting at six, so there's no confusion with the public.
Yes.
And then, June thirteenth and twenty-seventh are normal meetings, normal council meetings.
Okay. So, it'd be five P M.
What time?
Seventeenth, eighteenth.
Is it the eighteenth?
Sixteen, eighteen.
Yes.
That's in May, June.
Oh, we're looking at June out of the regular two.
June, there'd be the regular meetings.
June's regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be the thirteenth and the twenty- twenty-seventh. Three. Sixteenth, eighteenth, and the thirtieth. Yeah. The thirtieth will be at six, since that's the public hearing, so that way the public.
Six P M.
Okay. So, um. All right, so we're, we'll meet on, um, May the sixteenth, Tuesday, May the sixteenth, five P M. Thursday, May the eighteenth, five P M, and have a public hearing on Tuesday, the thirtieth, at six P M. Okay?
Are we sure we can't have a continuing resolution like Congress does? When they haven't had a budget in five, ten years?
So, are there any other items?
Like I say, if you all, if y'all want to talk about the landfill, I'll be happy to answer questions or today or Saturday.
One, one thing, I don't know if you want to wait till Saturday, but I do know, uh, that the treasurer's here, and as I mentioned to you, she'll be out of, out of town this, this weekend and not be able to attend Saturday. So, I think if we have any questions of her, to be respectful of that, um, to go ahead and ask those now. Do you have any questions or?
While she's coming up, I had one question on the, um, Commissioner Revenue's numbers. Is that with outstanding appeals still in the process, or is that all wrapped up?
My understanding is it is wrapped up, but I'll let him confirm.
So, it's all the appeals then, okay.
I guess that's why I'm pulling up another two from the original, because it didn't have a appeal attached.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, Angel, you can come up.
You can't hear me or they?
Just, just tell us in general, Angel, if you got any concerns about the tax collection rates based on this year versus last year. Do you have any concerns about personal property or anything that you're seeing that's unusual, that's saying the amount of tax collection could be off?
I'm pleased with the tax collections through the current date. I know that this is a tough budget year. I wish I could say that I have an extra half a million dollars or so to bring to the table. What I hear from the public is they can't take another tax increase. Five cents one year, seven cents the next, so I think this equalization thing, and I'm not the expert on that, that would be the Commissioner Revenue, I think that would be the route to go. Bring it down.
So, can you give us what the collections were in total for each of the categories for like mid-year, the, say, the December?
Our personal property through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. We had a total of a million, ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six. That would be personal property, two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Our real estate through December thirty-first of two thousand and sixteen, we have a total of one million, six hundred, eighty-three thousand, ninety-one dollars and sixty-three cents. If we look at January, nope, that wouldn't be good. We look at March the thirty-first, the personal property, two thousand and sixteen taxes were eighty-nine point three eight percent collected. And the two thousand and sixteen real estate taxes were ninety-five point five four percent collected. So, averaging those two together, ninety-four percent of the people that were billed for taxes for two thousand and sixteen paid their taxes. We have six percent of the citizens of Bristol, Virginia who have not paid their taxes.
So, is that typical of previous years, is that in line with what your experience is?
It is in line.
So, nothing unusual you're seeing in tax collections, and that's what we're hearing, right?
Correct.
Questions I have? Anybody else? Any question? And, um, you have already sent out the bills for the first half billing, is that correct?
The file was sent to our out queue on Saturday, I got back into town Sunday night, worked on it till ten P M., and it was approved on Sunday night. The printers hope to get it out today, I did not hear from them, so tax bills will be mailed tomorrow. And we'll say a two-day turnaround period for people to get their mail. The Code of Virginia requires the treasurer send out tax bills fourteen days before the due date, so we are well ahead of that.
But the, it will still have the current rate, which, based on the information we received tonight, would probably need to be revived, brought down to equalize the tax, is that right?
It will, and I've explained that on the backside of the tax bills. The tax bill for the spring is based on the December billing, so our rate was a dollar nineteen. That's what the file that I received from the Commissioner Revenue's office did calculate at. It used the new values from the reassessment that were on file whenever his staff prepared the book. So, any payment that is made in the June bill will be a payment toward the annual tax. So, if the council reduces the tax rate, someone, it's not a fifty-fifty split. Just like if you have a tax rate increase, the first bill is less than the second bill. If you decrease your interest rate, that's why your, uh, tax rate, the amount paid on the second bill would be possibly less than what the first bill was.
All comes out the wash, it's just not going to be a fifty-fifty.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, basically, they're going to be higher than the first bill, the second, December one will be- will be obviously lower, because we will have to reduce the tax rate.
Correct, and we will take, or the Commissioner's Office will take the land value and the improved value, multiply that by your new tax rate, divide by 100, come up with the annual tax, and we will subtract off the June payment to come up with the balance.
So those land values are after people might have appealed or whatever, correct?
That would also be adjusted by the Commissioner of the Revenue, if there is a change in those assessed values through the court process or through any other process that they have an erroneous assessment, they would adjust those with an abatement.
Okay.
And I would advise the taxpayer, if they have a bill and their situation has not been resolved by June 5th or December 5th, to pay the tax. If there is a tax reduction, a refund check would be issued or a credit toward their December tax. That way they would not incur a penalty or interest.
Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out. Any, any other questions again?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I'd also note that Casey Barnes will be unable to be here Saturday as well, they have a golf tournament, and he needs to be at the course, but I know you all talked to him last night, but I wanted to let you know that in case you had anything additional.
All right.
Okay, so, I mean, with that, do you wanna talk about the landfill we can?
You wanna? Talk about it tonight, or you wanna wait till Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday? Okay, I think, I think we're happy to wait till Saturday.
Always hoping you'll be dead if you keep putting it off.
Yes, at 9:00 in the morning.
No need doing work while you're still alive.
All right, so with that, we'll move to item number F, matters to be presented by members of the public. And we had two people sign up, and again, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or as close to there as possible, and you'll see the lights that help, help you with that. The first person signed up, Renee Hunt?
Hello, my name is Renee Hunt, I live at 20 Jackson Lane, Bristol, Virginia. I've been there approximately 18 years, and I've lived in Bristol all my life. I am basically here tonight to give you, Mayor, and council members, an update from the last meeting I attended that I had questions about, and the update is, there is no update. I never received a call, never received a letter, no message left on the answer machine, so still do not have an answer to the question I presented at the last meeting.
You are correct, Ms. Lynn. It is on my list of things to do, I have not been able to get out there in the last two weeks, so.
We pretty well had her covered up with tasks.
I can understand that, I'm just keeping you updated as, as I get updated on that item.
All right, well, thank you for coming back. All right, next on the list, Mr. Michael Pollard.
Thank you, for the record, my name is Michael Pollard, I live at 101 Ashley Drive. Someone asked the question after the consent agenda concerning the appointment to, of the Transportation and Safety Commission, because that appeared not to be mentioned. I was just wondering where that stood. The appointment to Transportation and Safety Commission, which was part of the consent agenda?
Yeah. It would, it would have been approved along with all the items on the consent agenda. Items 4.1 through 4.5 were all approved.
I see how it's broken out, it was slightly confusing.
Right, we just didn't hear that, we heard the other items, we didn't hear that, that particular one. Okay, that answers that question, and I tend to forget to mention things that are done well, so I'll start with that. The text message yesterday for the, for the agenda for today was revised, that, that the agenda for today was revised, included information about what was changed, so I do appreciate the information there. As you also know by now, I'm always pushing for improvements. The public was not provided the agenda for yesterday's meeting, the document described as an agenda only had the called meeting notice, and the same applies for Saturday's meeting. I know there, it's mostly broken down into points related to the budget, but obviously there is an agenda for the meeting, and that was not provided to the public. Concerning the dominant topic of the discussions yesterday, I hold that the government should only do that which others, be those private businesses, individuals, or lower levels of government as appropriate, cannot and should not, should, the government should only do for those which others cannot or should not do for themselves. For example, streets must be handled on a community level, and police services must necessarily be far removed from a profit motive. But if a local organization is not only willing, but actively wants to provide EMS services, the city has, and, and this organization has a long history of excellent service, then the city has no business competing against them. Concerning the golf course, we have created certain obligations and set certain standards which must be, be maintained and on which residents have come to rely. I do, while I do not believe that this is a role for government, I recognize the benefit to the community. I would encourage the city to pursue a buyer or management arrangement, possibly retaining the current senior staff, which appear to have done an excellent job in their tenure there. But an arrangement under which the city no longer has the liabilities and at least gains annual revenues equivalent to the, the currently lost real estate taxes. Further, I would encourage the council to look into the joint operating expenses, of which there are many in the budget, to determine three things. One, are these expenses evenly split, or are they prorated by population? Two, many of these expenses have increased markedly, for example, the Department of Social Services increased by almost $700,000 and almost 15% over last year's actual amount, that's account 53010. And also, third, are any of these groups from which we can withdraw and save the expense? For example, are we getting $2.1 million in benefit from Highland's comm policy and management team, or can we scale down our participation and reduce the expense? These are some questions that, I don't know the details of exactly what those provide, maybe we are getting that much benefit, but that's a lot of money. That's account 53050. I also had a question concerning GIS, but I, it looks like I'm out of time, I was gonna bring that up during the other point, but we didn't get, have information.
If you have a very quick question, I'll go ahead and indulge Mr. Pollard.
One, I was wondering if in that process, if similar, confusing similar addresses will be straightened up, for example, right now we have a Wagner Road, and a Wagner Street, and a Wagner Alley.
Actually, there is what's referred to as the NINA standard, it's a national standard for addressing, which will have to, every address in this city will have to fall within that compliance for sequential addressing, as well as odds even, same side of the road, and similar street names will be looked at if it could possibly cause confusion for emergency services.
Okay, I had, on my church van route, I had one of those confusions two weeks ago. I was told that the person was on Wagner Street, and my GPS said that there was no Wagner Street, and it referred me to the same house number on Wagner Road.
Yes.
Turns out that there's the same house number on both of them. And then also, what about updated data? For example, the property beside mine was sold two years ago, more of two and a quarter years ago now, but both the GIS site data and the city tax page have the information about the previous owner. I do have the parcel number for that specifically.
When did, when did you last check the city's GIS site for that data?
Today.
Today?
During the meeting.
Okay, and that's, that's something that I would gladly like to see you about later, so we can.
Okay, I do have that parcel number, if you wanna look into that specifically. That's parcel number 304-7-4, that's my immediate neighbor, it's an unoccupied property currently.
I'll be glad to check that.
Mr. Pollard, in regard to your first question, the city manager may be able to address this now, or if not, later, some of those agencies you mentioned, like Highland's Community Policy and Management, they're state mandated, and as you point out, there, some of them, they use different formulas to calculate each locality share, some of them are per capita, some of them are based on usage, some of them are very convoluted in how they arrive at that, but most of the, I know the ones that you just mentioned, and a lot of those agencies that sometimes get listed as outside agencies, they're mandated, and so when we had the first work session, those agencies didn't come because there was really no sense in them coming before council, because we have no control over. Now, there, there are, not all of the outside agencies are that way, but some that are listed that way, they're listed as outside agencies because they're not a, they don't fall under a city department, but they are state mandated.
I serve on that particular committee, and it's, it's mandated by the state, and it's based purely on expense. We've worked with Washington County, whatever the bills are, we gotta pay them, and same with the county, so.
I didn't know if maybe those.
Can, if I could too, I would just add that, for example, that, that item, the last item you referenced, 53050, Highland's Community Policy and Management Team, which is what they're talking about, that's the entire, you know, we, expense, there's also revenue that offsets that from the, from the state, and so the net city share is around 600,000, but it's a mandated expense we have to pay.
Okay.
Same with DSS, it includes state and federal revenues.
Do you know, just concerning possibilities, do you know if that's prorated based on population? Because Washington County's got a lot more people.
For DSS or CSA? I mean, for DSS or Highland's policy?
For Highland's policy.
It's based on the exact number of cases, is what it's based on.
It's based on the money spent for citizens of Bristol and Washington County, so the numbers are kept separately, and it looks like this year.
They keep the records in extreme detail, and so we know the actual cost.
Yes, and the Director, Andre Richmond, has presented to council a variety of times, and has part of his job.
It's just very large total numbers, so.
Yes, it is. It is, and.
Worth looking into.
In fact, we actually met, the mayor and the vice mayor and I met with some of our state delegation to talk about it, because it's an increasing expense for them as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Those were the only two people that signed up, however, anyone that arrived up late or would wish to speak, if you have the opportunity. All right, nobody wishes to speak, we'll move to item G, executive session. An executive session pursuant to section 2.2-3711.85, Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, unannounced business, that have a motion to enter into executive session.
Move to executive session, so this code section is cited, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I have a motion by Councilman Flener, seconded by Vice Mayor Hubbard. Clerk, call the roll.
Flener.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Moonpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right, all right, item number H, certified executive session. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session or discuss. Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Moonpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right, being noted for other business, we stand adjourned.